Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Hey, Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Switchy. Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Bavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that we excuse the absent council member.
Second. Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we've got some proclamations. We've got three, in fact. Jason.
Okay. The first proclamation is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Proclamation. Whereas each year in the United States, more than 15,000 children, from birth to 19 years old, are diagnosed with cancer, equal to about 42 childhood cancer diagnoses each day. And whereas each year worldwide, there are more than 300,000 new childhood cancer diagnoses, which means about every three minutes, a family will hear the words, "Your child has cancer." And whereas although the five-year survival rate for childhood cancers has reached 80%, nearly 2,000 American children under the age of 19 still die each year from cancer, making it the leading killer of children by disease. And whereas those that do survive will often face at least one chronic health condition later on in life, including but not limited to heart, liver, or lung damage, infertility, secondary cancers, and growth deficits. Whereas the causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown, and more studies are needed to understand which treatments work best for children, as they often must differ from traditional adult treatments, to take into account children's developmental needs and other factors. And whereas hundreds of children are being treated for cancer in Washington State, and whereas Washington is a caring state and community that supports children and families. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 2018 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed in September 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second. Been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Olivia Gonzalez is here to accept this proclamation. Olivia, you want to?
Actually, okay. One, two, and... Yeah, thank you. I feel kind of funny talking about childhood cancer when Antonio is pretty much grown now. But Antonio was diagnosed with stage IV neuroblastoma when he was two years old. At the time, I knew nothing about cancer. I didn't know any kids who had cancer, and I felt very lost and confused. Around... Antonio did eight rounds of chemotherapy, surgery to remove his main tumor, a stem cell transplant, 12 rounds of radiation, and six months of immunotherapy. As he started his treatment, I started doing research, and I was so shocked to find out that very little money goes into research for childhood cancer. Also so saddened by the fact that there are more deaths than survivors. Antonio was given a 25% chance to survive himself. Antonio was one of the first kids to start an experimental trial at Seattle Children's back in 2004. We met quite a few other kids who were going through the same treatment. Unfortunately, every child we met during treatment passed away during their cancer, or from their cancer, which made going through treatment very terrifying for us. I'm happy to say Antonio just celebrated 14 years of remission just a few weeks ago. He's a senior at Lindbergh High School and is thriving. Since Antonio's treatment, no new trials have really come out. Forty-two kids are diagnosed with cancer every day. One out of eight kids diagnosed with cancer will not survive. I have made it my goal over the last 14 years to bring awareness to the community, and along the way, I've also raised close to $100,000 in childhood cancer research. Every year, I host a huge lemonade stand event, and I'm extremely grateful to the City of Renton, who has always supported my efforts. For several years now, Mayor Law has made appearances at my events, along with City Council members, the City of Renton Fire Department, and other wonderful supportive community leaders. I'm proud to be from a city who supports so much, or supports us so much, and cares so much about this great cause. Thank you so much for this proclamation during Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This means so much to me and my family.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you've done in the community around this issue. Antonio, do you want to say anything?
I'm good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next proclamation is Diaper Need Awareness Week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diaper changes per week over three years, and whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary, which can cause economic hardship for families. And whereas the supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infants and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the City of Renton recognizes that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families, can lead to improved health for families and their communities. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of September 24th through 30th, 2018, to be Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in the City of Renton. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of September 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, here to accept this proclamation is Robin Brigham and Christine White.
Members of the council and the audience, I'm Robin Brigham, a volunteer at Eastside Baby Corner, and I'm here to represent Eastside Baby Corner as a resident of Renton.
And my name is Christine White. I'm the annual fund officer at Eastside Baby Corner. Thank you very much for presenting this proclamation in honor of Diaper Need Awareness Week. EBC's mission directly addresses the needs addressed in the proclamation you just read. Through a network of our partner agencies, over 200 sites and locations, and 50 agencies in four county area, EBC provides hundreds of children with diapers and much more at no cost to the family or our agency partners. With basic needs met and their stress re-lowered, families are able to participate longer and more successfully in these programs, and are better able to safeguard the health and well-being of their children. Our partners, such as Friends of Youth in Renton, Renton Area Youth Services, and more in this area, can order almost anything a child from birth to age 12 needs to thrive. Items like car seats, clothing, formula, pack-and-play beds, toys, and books, in addition to the diapers we've been talking about. In just the first two quarters of 2018, Eastside Baby Corner has provided 42,100 diaper changes for children in Renton. And from January through June of this same year, EBC has helped 950 Renton-area children by providing about approximately 285,000 worth of vital goods for local families. Last year overall, EBC provided nearly 1 million diaper changes in our service area, part of a $4.5 million distribution, helping more than 12,000 children have what they need when they need it. EBC is not only a place that helps kids, it is also a place where you can help kids. Volunteers, like Robin here, are the heart of EBC, and many of the goods EBC gives out are donated by the Renton community and other communities in our area. We carefully purchase other goods to ensure that every order of health and safety essentials like diapers is fulfilled. Thank you again for your many years of support of Eastside Baby Corner, and for recognizing National Diaper Need Awareness Week through this proclamation. And finally, I'd like to share a brief video with you that highlights the importance of diapers and the help that you've given.
As a family advocate at Learningland, I feel that diapers open up doors for me and for the families because it opens up a dialogue where I can ask them if they need diapers for their child, and it's such an easy answer. Everybody knows that families need diapers. Being able to offer diapers to families helps to create that strong bond and strong connection with families, because it's such a basic need that every family needs. I don't think I've had any family that didn't need diapers at one point from me, and it just relieves so much stress on them. I've had a lot of parents, during the years I've been helping them, that have talked about going back to school, but it also means that they're not bringing that income in anymore that they were able to provide for basic needs for their family. They know that I'm here for them, and they know that Eastside Baby Corner is here for them. Going back to school changes their whole life. Getting a degree means that they won't need help in the future. And the odds are, if children see their parents go to school, they're going to want to go to college. I need to make sure the kids are safe, and I need to make sure that I'm providing resources for parents so that they can keep their kids safe. One of the ways that I do that is I ask parents if they have a car seat, and if the car seat is the correct car seat for their child's weight and height. And I've had many situations where a parent had to make the decision whether or not they were going to go back to someone's house who was hurting them to go get their car seat for their baby, or come to school without a car seat. Put them in the car without a car seat, drive here, and be worried the whole time. As soon as I found out, I said, "Don't worry. Borrow my car seat first, take mine, and then I'm going to get you a car seat from Baby Corner." And I was able to get them a car seat that day. Helps them to trust me, and that makes them trust me for all sorts of things. They feel that they can trust me to help them find a provider for their child's vision, and getting new glasses, and having me call around to try and find someone that takes their insurance. Because that can be really stressful, and that starts with diapers.
Thank you.
Among the first five ingredients, you shouldn't find sugar. Okay. Now, sugar's supposed to be eaten, of course, but it should come together with either fat...
Okay, the final proclamation is National Good Neighbor Day. Whereas National Good Neighbor Day is a time to reach out and acknowledge your neighbors, and express thanks to those who helped make your neighborhood a great place to live. And whereas in 1978, President Jimmy Carter announced the creation of the National Day aimed at raising public awareness, that good neighbors help achieve human understanding and build strong, thriving communities. And whereas all residents, businesses, and community groups are encouraged to participate in recognizing and connecting with neighbors through generous acts of kindness, such as organizing a donation drive for a local charity, hosting a neighborhood block party for all your neighbors to attend, or delivering cookies, food, or gift bags to neighbors, businesses, and community groups who have contributed to the well-being of your neighborhood. And whereas by taking part in this national pledge, we recognize that Renton community is strongest, safest, and happiest when we are connected to, in communication with, and in service to our neighbors. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 28, 2018, to be National Good Neighbor Day in the City of Renton, in recognition of the importance of being good neighbors, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of September 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. McGurven.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Give this proclamation to Kerry Nass, Dre Hicks.
Members of the City Council, thank you for proclaiming this Friday, September 28th, Good Neighbor Day. Really excited for this week. We're going to use this as an opportunity to just work with residents and encourage them to reach out to their neighbors, establish relationships they may not have in the past. This is an opportunity for them to just do great acts of kindness within the community, maybe donate child goods to a local charity, maybe volunteer at a local park, or simply just say thanks to your neighbors for babysitting your kid, to, you know, calling when your dog gets loose. So, really just want to take this as an opportunity to showcase the value of being a good neighbor, and take this as a step into really kind of showcasing what the value of being a good neighbor is to the City of Renton. So I appreciate your time, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a special presentation. Family First Center update.
Council President Prince, council members, my name's Kelly Beamer. I'm the Community Services Administrator for the city. Council, we had promised that throughout the process of the Family First Community Center, heading into construction, designing construction, that we would continue to keep council prized of where we're at, and so this is one of our check-in points. Please stop me at any time if you do have a question on what we're presenting. This is, we wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are at currently with regards to funding, either pledged, or we've already received donations. As you can see, we are well over, not well over, but we are over $10 million, and working towards our goal of $15 million for the construction of the facility. Currently, what we have under contract, as you can see, is a total of $360,000. We've expended the 145.7 of that. That includes the architects for the schematic design, includes our project manager, it includes all of the preliminary work for the schematic design and site plan, so we're working through the traffic and parking with the engineer right now. We've had a survey done of the area that the facility will be built on. We've had to go through geotechnical and environmental assessments. We've got an estimator, and we've also hired a legal contract specialist. This was, the legal contract specialist was recommended by our city attorney. As the project will be over $10 million, this is something that's kind of reaches that next pinnacle, and we wanted to make sure that we're bringing on somebody that can address those construction bid documents appropriately. We're also working currently in finalizing the parking traffic plan with the Renton School District. So they're at the table with us all the time as one of our partners, as well as Health Point. We are entering now into some negotiation and review of finalizing what we're calling the full contract, which is for the final design, for construction and bid documents, and the construction management of the entire project. Once we get those put together, then we'll be coming to council for approval of that. We also will be scheduling our first community meeting. It's estimated the end portion of October, first part of November, as we get some of the traffic and parking assessments completed, so that we've got answers for the public, and we'll be able to give them the floor, if you will, when we look at programming and what's going on with the community center. We've had a lot of great feedback from the school district and the neighbors currently. We're looking at also having it at the school, so that it will attract the community that it will support, as well as trying to coordinate with Doug Baldwin as well, since this is one of his passions, and we'll be operating the facility. So we want to make sure that we're giving all the opportunity for the community to participate in the outreach. And then we'll also be working with the city attorney's office. We've got an inter-local agreement that will need to be finalized or formalized with the school district as far as use of the property in the facility. This is what we're calling schematic design. As you can see, the building design has changed from the original conceptual photo that we had. This is a view from the south corner. We're also working on redrafting the brochure, revising that. Along with that, the schematic design, we will be, the architects are working towards a lead design on this, so they'll be hitting the lead standards for this building. This is the view from the west, which would be looking at it from 116th, the main avenue that runs in front of the school. As you can see, part of the lead current conceptual or schematic is the type of material that will be on the roof, which has grass-type material, if you will, and no, we do not need to have mowers up there, if you were going to ask. And here's what we have looked at for approximately 26,000-square-foot facility. This now, the planned design is fairly consistent with where we have been for the last few months now. All of the partners are pretty comfortable with how this layout looks, with the entrance, which is on the far left, which would be the west side of the property, running east back towards the large gym where the basketball court is. If you can see, here is, would be like a community room or classrooms. We also have, this would be the maker space, or where school district will be utilizing it for STEM programming. This section in here is the Health Point section for medical and dental offices. We're also looking at where we can have mobile vans for clothing and food bank deliveries and/or just allowing the public to utilize that, as well as if we're using it as a community room, and/or we can utilize the gym for large public meetings. That could be where food is delivered for that as well. On the north side of the property, these would be the offices, excuse me, the offices right here, for the recreation portion of it. These are smaller rooms where we can separate out youth, teen, and younger, two- to five-year-old kids, so that they're not all in the same room, and we need to do that to keep that separation. Here's a larger, for physical fitness, equipment room. This would be more of a dance room, and/or smaller classrooms for programming. We have locker rooms, but currently, we are not going to have showers in this facility, as it is more of a community-based facility. And then, obviously, this is the large gym area. So to complete our funding, where we're looking at the $15 million goal, we're currently working on coordinating two to three lunches with the businesses that have not been contacted yet, and higher-opportunity individuals that have large funding reservoirs, hopefully. The mayor and Doug would be presenting to these groups in a larger, a little bit larger format, so that if they themselves aren't able to donate, that we're separating that out as more of a networking opportunity as well, so they can contact other people that may be within their network we're not aware of. Health Point has been a fantastic partner, and has come forward to help us with other options on grant funding. They've committed to writing, identifying, which they've identified a couple grants already, and writing the proposals for grants to go towards either construction and/or operations of the facility. And then we're working with our communications division, so we'll be finalizing and updating the brochure and the marketing materials that will support these meetings for additional So next steps, as we, again, had promised council, we'll continue to provide updates as progress is made, so we'll make sure that we're coming in front of council on a timely basis. And then, obviously, early notification, as soon as we're able to identify when the community meeting will be at Cascade Elementary, we'll make sure that council is aware of that as well. And then, once we get through the completion of the bid documents and the bid opening, we'll be preparing agenda bill, obviously, for authorization from council to award the Currently, we don't have a firm estimation of when that will be, but I would imagine we're looking at, hopefully, the bid documents going out right around the first of the year. And we'll be getting some firm timeframes on that, probably by the end of October, once we get to the final documents for architect contract. And that's what we have currently. Any questions?
Any questions from council? All right, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got the administrative report. Jan.
Thank you, President Prince. We have two announcements this evening. First, please join farmers, vendors, volunteers, and city staff at the last Renton Farmers' Market of 2018 on Tuesday, September 25th, that's tomorrow, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Piazza Park in downtown Renton, and say thanks for another great market season. In addition to all of the fantastic flowers and farm-fresh products that thousands of people have enjoyed these past 16 weeks, we have an abundance of activities planned for the last market day, such as live music, tips from master gardeners, a cooking demonstration, and children's activities. You can visit our website at www.RentonFarmersMarket.com for more information. And second, there are several preventive street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week. Information can be found at RentonLaw.gov/trafficimpacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have audience comment. We have one person signed up for audience comment. When you come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Pat Spangler.
Good evening, Mayor, Law, and council members. My name is Pat Spangler. I've been a resident of Renton for 40 years, residing in the Cascade, Benson, Rolling Hills area. And I'm here today to just comment on the project for the Family First Community Center, FFCC, proposed to be constructed adjacent to the Cascade Elementary School, owned by the Renton School District. I support this project, please, no, I do support it, but I do have concerns. And the concerns, it looks like maybe they have been addressed in this most recent update, but let me go through, since I've written all this, and kind of tell you what my concerns are, and they are the parking impacts and the traffic associated with this project. I have a grandson who attends this school. I am the one who drops him off every morning and picks him up every day, and I know the congestion that's there. And it's just, you know, with the access around the school, the parking is limited as it is. Over the past few months, I've requested documents through public disclosure, and I want to thank Melissa in your clerk's office. She's assisted me in procuring the documents, and she's just been really gracious to me, and patient, and professional, to help me understand the process in requesting the documents. Not in understanding what they mean, because I tell you, I don't quite understand what they mean, but I wanted to review them to the best of my knowledge to know how this might impact the area. So, and I'm not here as an expert on the documents, I've just reviewed them, and I did look at the most recent document that was presented in a pre-application on July 31st, and had some concerns in there in the overall development of the project. And they are, safety to the students that are there, and how this big of a facility is going to be positioned next to the school and separating it, and then the adequate parking. I understand they used a residential, for the zoning there is residential, and it was about 115 stalls, and they were going to utilize some of the existing stalls, and I thought, I don't know how that's going to work, because it's pretty full every day. And I'm also a volunteer there, so I know what's remaining there is very few. When I go there, around 10:00 in the... remaining there is very few, when I go there around 10:00 in the morning. So, there's also the ingress egress. Didn't seem there was any change to that, so wasn't quite sure how that was going to work. And I was wondering if there was going to be traffic lights installed to the ingress egress for the facilities, both facilities. And I did notice that the uses, you know, as were proposed, were the medical, dental, you know, and even daycare. I didn't hear daycare mentioned when it was, when, I'm sorry, I forgot her name who was speaking of the update. And I was just, you know, there seems like a lot of use there, different use that you could, you know, would have to accommodate not only the staff, but the visitors. And I'm hoping that this is going to be so successful, it's going to be so crowded there all the time. You know, this is the goal, I would imagine, of this whole council member, is that this is really going to be a utilized facility. And in doing so, we will, you know, have traffic issues there unless we do some changes. But I also understood that there was supposed to be a capital project for 116th, and it would start from 168th and north to 20th. And I saw there was a bike lane, and is that bike lane going to be on the east side or the west side? Currently, vehicles park on the east side. So, you know, this has been that, and then also the cost analysis. When you were considering it, we have the $15 million, and you have pledges to help to cover that cost, but is what's going to happen going forward in the operations? Are there going to be, I heard there's going to be a grant through, you know, that we're going to try to get through Health Point, but how about the rest of the facility? How, who is, is that going to be the city's responsibility to pay for staff and for operations and maintenance of the facility? So, you know, it's just, that's just kind of another side issue. I don't know. Anyway. And outside of that, the only other item I had was in the traffic. If the traffic gets to be such along 116th that you get the, from Tiffany Park and lower...
I'm sorry, Ms. Spangler, your time's up. If council's willing to grant you a little bit more time?
Oh, I just have one other point. Thank you so much. That also the traffic would overflow and maybe instead of being on 116th would then go down and utilize Puget Drive. So, I thank you very much and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up's our consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. Are there any items council members would like to have pulled from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I'd like to pull item B.
Item B, all right.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Minus item B.
Minus item B.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we approve the consent agenda, minus item B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is a monumentous occasion, and I just couldn't let it go unnoticed to the public. Two things are actually, two people are in the audience, Chief Kevin Milosevic, whose last day with the city is going to be on Friday, the 28th, and the person that we're going to confirm is the next police chief, Ed Van Bailey. And both these people have been outstanding employees, outstanding police officers, outstanding members of our community for what they've done outside of the job. I can't be prouder of both of them, but I'm especially proud of Ed. Ed started working for our Parks Department when he was 16 years old, and now he's going to become our police chief. And I'm very proud to move that we confirm Ed Van Bailey as the next police chief of the City of Renton.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that we confirm Ed Van Bailey as our next police chief. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And we're not going to ask you for a speech.
All right. Next up's unfinished business. Mr. Person.
It's hard to beat that one, but I do have three finance committee reports.
Mr. Person, I actually have one committee of the whole report and two finance committee reports.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Do you want me to read? Oh, let's start with the committee of the whole committee report.
Thank you.
Okay. This is regarding Renton Municipal Code Title IV, quasi-judicial appeals, option A. The committee of the whole has considered the recommendation of the planning commission and the information provided by staff regarding updating the Renton Municipal Codes Title IV procedures for quasi-judicial appeals. The committee of the whole recommends that council amend the Renton Municipal Code consistent with option A as originally presented by staff on July 9, 2018. The committee requests that staff prepare draft ordinance for presentation to the city council when it's ready. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council approve the committee report. Thank you.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council approve the committee of the whole committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, and I have two finance committee reports. The first is regarding claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment, $6,920,298.06 for vouchers 368-286 through 368-287, and 368-300 through 368-711. Payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5885 through 5894, and 368-288 through 368-299, and seven wire transfers. Payroll, a total payment of $1,523,371.93 for payroll vouchers, which include 785 direct deposits and 12 checks. This is the August 16th through 31st, 2018 pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
The committee, the finance committee, went through again another 160 pages of vouchers to get this, and there's just three of them, of bills that we paid that kind of stood out to me this week. And the first one I do in honor of King Parker. He always liked to know what the Puget Sound Energy Bill was. And for the last month, it was $133,276.75. And then, also in there is, the city bought, as hopefully the public is aware, there's federal requirements that we sweep our streets every so many days. And one of the ways we do that is we use a lot of street sweepers. Well, we just bought a brand-new street sweeper to keep up with that, and that was $231,495. Those babies aren't cheap. And then going along with that, for wastewater, they bought a typhoon nozzle, and that was about $1,800. And this is one that they use on one of these big tractor trucks to clean out the pipes when they're checking them. I just thought those were, the three things were interesting. With that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that the council concur in the finance committee committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final finance committee report is regarding a grant from King County for the senior center. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute King County Spring 2018 Senior Center Funding Grant Agreement and allocate the grant funds to the City of Renton Recreation and Neighborhood Division. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
As always, I'd love to accept money, and this is an $87,500 grant. That'll be for the Renton Senior Center. With that, I move the council approve the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that the council approve the finance committee committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Person. Mr. McGurven.
No unfinished business, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bravoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up is new business. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next Monday, I'm not, hard to believe it's October 1st already. I'm getting too old to let time go that fast. Anyway, at 5:30 p.m., the committee of the whole will meet in the council chambers, and we will be here, the mayor's budget message and proposed budget. And the second item will be the 2019 and 2020 budget overview. That's it.
All right. Mr. McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two committees to announce. First, for council member Wichi, I want to announce that the utilities committee will be meeting at 3:30 p.m. on Thursday, September 27th, in the council conference room. There are two items on the agenda. First, utilities systems capital improvement program briefing, and second, emerging issues in utilities. And then, right after that, at 4:30 p.m. in the council conference room, also on Thursday, September 27th, the planning and development committee will be meeting with six items on the agenda. First is Housing Opportunity Fund Award, Sunset Crest Town Homes, Shoreline Master Program Amendments, Wireless Communication Facilities Exemption Briefing, Adoption of National Electrical Code, Safe and Healthy Housing Briefing, and finally, emerging issues in CED. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Service Committee will meet in the council conference room next Monday, October 1st, at 4:30, and there are three items in the agenda. One is Recreation New Program Update, two Senior Center Grant Project Update, and emerging issues in community services. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bravoni.
No new business, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll just announce that I'm canceling Transportation Committee on October 1st. That's all.
All right. What's the Wichi council?
We adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved, we adjourned by Mr. Bravoni, seconded by Mr. Person, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.